I would like to order the President and Board of Trustees, roll call.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich.
Here.
Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I have two quick ones. I want to thank the conservation for the parade we had yesterday. It was seventy-five units, at least I'm told. I think there was maybe a couple more snuck in there somewhere, but it went real well. I think we had a big turnout. Chief Connaughton stated that he thought it was between eight and ten thousand people to view, so congratulations to those. And as I've been reminded, that parade started a number of years ago with one wagon around a block, and there was no crowds, no cheering or anything else, so this, you know, it's quite an accomplishment on their part. And the other one is our own chaplain from our police department, Sherry Bates, was just presented with the Illinois Conference of Police Chaplains at March tenth, award for excellence in law enforcement. So I want to send a congratulations out to her, and that's all I have.
Trustees, comments?
I too would like to thank the VPA for organizing yesterday's parade. It certainly is, as Mayor has referenced already, it certainly has grown in size over the years. And I think it's a great community relation, community building event in Plainfield. I hope it continues for many years to come. One of the things that resulted over the weekend here on the riverfront was some damage to the property. I don't believe it's intentional, however, I would encourage Plainfield to view Electric Park as a park. I realize parking is a great commodity in downtown, but some people parked in the mud. And that property has recently been reseeded after the path was installed last fall. So I would just encourage residents to take a little more care when visiting the park. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Vicki Palito for guaranteeing we'd have a great day on Sunday. Businesses also thank you very much because they did a booming business downtown and elsewhere. Every place was crowded during the parade and afterwards, so got a lot of people out, and thank you Vicki, you did a great job of delivering.
I'd like to acknowledge Mrs. Plekum and Mr. Ray Murphy and all those who went in on the financial reporting acknowledgement. That was, I can't describe the whole thing, they'll have to tell you about it. But it was, it's an honor, and the reason it's so important to us is because we pride ourselves on the transparency of it. So thank you very much for the work on all of that.
Are there any other trustee comments? This will be time for public comments. Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Ed O'Rourke. I don't know if it's so much of a comment, but maybe more as a question. We got the village budget, and I was just going over it, and part of it included kind of a summary of different departments and stuff. And I don't know if I went through it too quickly or what, but just for clarification, I was looking for, I think it looks like it's showing three new hires for proposal for next year. One of those was a part-time to full-time in the police department. The other two and a half, I couldn't determine where those were. So I don't know if now's the appropriate time, or if you want to do it during the discussion of the budget, but if, maybe if you could just explain a little bit to where those positions are coming in at. Thank you.
We'll be happy to answer those during the public hearing comment of the meeting.
Are there any other public comments?
Hi, everybody, I'm Vicki Palito, I live in Walkers Grove. I actually wasn't going to make much comment tonight because I found that, I woke up today on this week's cover story for Bad Mood Magazine. But Margie mentioned transparency, and I just wanted to mention something that had been on my mind because you guys have been batting around the public comment policy. And it seems to me like there's been a lot of sort of blowback or resistance to some of that. You know, there's been jokes about people being, you know, coming up here and bothering you reading Dr. Seuss books. There's been comments that, you know, people shouldn't be FOIA-ing as much as they do, that people shouldn't be interested in the information as much as they are. And that just seems so wrong-headed to me, and I would imagine most of you don't actually feel that way. Most of you, when you want information, would like to have it readily available. And I would suggest to you that the more and more you make sort of automatically available to people where they don't have to ask you for it, the easier and easier it makes everybody's job and life and day-to-day, not just yours, but the people's. And I've noticed a number of organizations in town, this organization called Illinois Policy Institute, they give these sunshine awards out, and you guys, the library, other people, have talked about being granted one of their awards for transparency. Once again, Illinois Policy Institute is a sham charity. It is a Koch Brothers-backed, Alec, American Legislative Exchange Council-connected organization. That sunshine award is fairly worthless. And frankly, you shouldn't need anybody to be patting you on the back to do that kind of stuff anyway. So I would just encourage you to think a little more openly and think about the good it can do, not just you, but everyone else. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not them, we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on March 2nd and strategic planning meeting held on March 7th, bills paid and bills payable reports for March 16th, and cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for February.
Remove.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through C under the consent agenda. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 St. Mary Immaculate 5K. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2015 St. Mary Immaculate 5K run to be held on May 16th.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Hearing non-uppers.
For Commander Ruggles, or is there anything that we should know?
There are some changes, most notably since you received your packet, we have received their certificate of liability insurance from the organizer. There is a representative here tonight of the organization. If you do have any questions for him, the certificate is, meets our requirements at this time to move forward with it so we can remove the conditional approval of the board from the request that you received, and you can actually vote on the entirety tonight. The other issue is, we have been working with the organizer this year to try to resolve the issue of Remwick Road being blocked. We have come up with a new course. You should have received the map in your packets. That course no longer closes Remwick Road, which we feel is a very good move. It alleviates a lot of the congestion issues and such, especially since this event will be the same morning as graduation for Plainfield School District. So we will be using this route this year. The organizer has expressed that if this route is successful, they would like to use this route every year thereafter. It does confine it within Route 59, Route 30 and Remwick Road. None of those roads are impacted, so it is a much improvement from the previous years.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to authorize the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2015 St. Mary Immaculate 5K run. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015, 2016 fiscal year budget, public hearing. We're seeking motion to open a public hearing for, on the 2015-16 fiscal year budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you, as required by state statutes, this is the public hearing for the fiscal year 16 budget. As board recalls, several budget workshops have been taking place since back in October of 2014. The proposed budget you have in your packet tonight totals approximately forty-seven point nine million. It includes twenty-two and a half million in general fund operations, fifteen point seven in water and sewer fund operations, and about five point five million in capital or infrastructure improvements. In the current budget, we have three part-time positions that are moving to full-time, which is the GIS, the code enforcement officer and the building inspector position. We have a part-time that was a seasonal position that moved to a permanent part-time position in building as well. Also within the budget, in past discussions, there's contractual services included to maintain the seven-mile-long Route 59 corridor. And also, as in past discussions, what you see in the budget is a conservative revenue estimate based on the concerns that staff has at the state level regarding the income tax revenues that are still questionable as far as what will be received to the village. What's in the budget and included in the budget is a reduction of approximately twenty percent of income tax revenues. And that has, was discussed at the last workshop as well. The budget has been available for public inspection at Village Hall, it was also available online, and the notice was in all the local papers. And at this point, if there's any public comments, we'd be happy to have them come up to the podium, state their name for the record.
Tracy, can you reiterate that percentage that the state will impact the village?
Well, they're proposing currently a fifty percent reduction. We've proposed a twenty percent reduction within the budget based off of the 2014 numbers that we received.
And that's approximately two point five million dollars?
The five hundred, or the fifty percent is about one point nine million dollars in total, and so.
So that has been factored in, and you've.
Twenty of the fifty percent has, correct.
Thank you.
The reason that we didn't put all fifty percent in is that there's expectation that we won't see fifty percent taken this year. We feel fairly confident, based on what we're hearing, that twenty percent still is probably going to be a high number for this particular year. That being said, we do anticipate that ultimately, this is more a foreboding message from the state that ultimately it will be a fifty percent reduction on what we're seeing today, which already represents a twenty percent reduction, so it will be down to about forty percent of what it was at one time. And we're expecting that to be delivered out over about a three-year period.
This is a public hearing, are there any public comments? Not them, we're seeking motion to.
Mr. O'Rourke, you get the answer to your question?
We should, Russ.
Mentioned a couple, there's actually three half-time jobs went to full-time.
Right, and then we also have a seasonal, what we consider temporary seasonal-type position, part-time, that went to a permanent part-time as well within the building department. So those typically aren't included within the staffing schedule that we see. They're not listed because they're considered seasonal and temporary.
I'm sorry, I still, so I thought the one summary showed a hundred and thirty-two point five to a hundred and thirty-five point five, so three new positions, and I think you described three half-times, which would be one and a half. I'm sure it's probably in the report somewhere, I just read through it fairly quickly and didn't see it. I saw the halftime for the police department going to a full-time, but then there was a plus-one in the administration of finance, and then there was one point five in the community development.
Right, and the administration does not reflect, I see it now, on the fifteen actual. It should be fifteen and a half on the fourteen, fifteen actual. That was the full-time receptionist position that was budgeted at part-time on the fourteen, fifteen budget.
Thank you.
Fifteen and a half should be corrected.
We're seeking motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting.
That is my motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Just one comment, Mr. Murphy has put together a two-page letter in the front of the budget, and for, I think that may be fairly recent because it's dated today. Although it was written a couple days before that, it may not have been part of what we've seen before, but it's a very nice summary of what's going well, and the fact that this is a very prudent approach to budgeting frugal, that, which has put us in such good shape and continued the trend from before, so.
If I could add just a minor comment to trustee Lamb's comment. If you look at the budget summary, the very two, first two pages, Murphy's summary of village position, the very first line, it says, "We are pleased to present a balanced budget of forty-seven point nine million." Throughout the state of Illinois and in many of the Chicago suburbs, you're seeing various articles written about communities, municipalities that are bankrupt. Plainfield's far from being bankrupt, Plainfield is very healthy financially, and if you have an opportunity to read through this particular budget and absorb some of the material, our staff has done a wonderful job, the community is well-served by the village of Plainfield and the administration and all of its department heads, et cetera, et cetera. And like I reiterate, a balanced budget, we're not in deficit, and that's really a highlight for the village of Plainfield. Thank you.
Another highlight, and thank you both for those kind comments that you made. That heavy lifting was done by all of you and by the staff as well. I think what I'm most proud of with this particular budget is that this is the sixth year, I want you to make, I want to say that for effect, sixth year, that we have either kept property tax revenues the same or reduced them. We are the only organization in Will County that can take credit for holding our property tax revenues at or below what they were six years ago. That's a testament to the heavy lifting that's been done by this village board, and it's been an attempt to try to understand, try to appreciate the struggles that our residents have gone through over the past few years through the Great Recession. So that, to me, is the most noble message within our budget this year.
If I could add one further point to what we are doing in the discussion of this budget. It was alluded to openness and transparency in our government. This entire budget discussion, before it was finally presented in the final forum, was discussed at committee, the whole meetings, in open forum. The public had an opportunity for input, the village board had opportunity for input, our, all of our department people had their particular input. Every section of this budget was discussed in an open fashion. There's nothing absolutely secret about a thing. And if you have a question, you could have asked it at that particular time. And that's really a real positive for government, to be open, to be transparent. And this budget reflected that particular attitude.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Just a very brief comment, as Administrator Murphy had mentioned, six years and we have not raised revenue, and, you know, those really were some hard decisions that, you know, we as a board had to make. But in the end, Administrator Murphy had to go back and work with staff and do the heavy lifting every single day as a result of those decisions we made. So I do want to recognize you and all the hard work and creativeness that you had to implement in order to work within the budgets that we've, you know, we've approved for you. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not, we're seeking a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two oh eight, adopting the annual budget for the village of Plainfield 2015-2016 fiscal year. Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Somerset at Grant Park. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two oh nine, approving an amendment to an annexation agreement for Somerset at Grant Park.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Now please state your name when you get there, please.
Mr. Rosenova, on behalf of the petitioner, Kehovenian.
Mr. Rosenova, I have just a couple of comments regarding the report given to us regarding yard size, yard sizes. Page two of the exhibit, the home exhibits, states that lots thirty-three, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight will be seventy-one hundred square feet minimum to design around existing underground utilities. Can you expand on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Can you expand on lots thirty-three, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight being a minimum size of seventy-one hundred square feet?
It relates to the location of the existing utilities that were already installed and working around those particular utilities. When we were back here in August for our concept review, August of fourteen last year, we noted that due to the existing utilities, there was going to be certain confines that we would work within, but there might be the occasion for a few of the lots that we were going to have to stay around that configuration, which was going to cause the need for those few lots to stay at that seventy-one hundred square feet. But what we were ultimately able to do is raise the remainder of the lots up to an average of nine thousand three hundred seventy-seven square feet, consistent with the direction we received from this board at that time.
Thank you. And I also noted that the front yard setbacks will be increased to thirty feet on lots fourteen, sixteen, and eighteen to improve streetscape.
Correct, and that was a recommendation from Michael, which we think makes a lot of sense. The staggering will have a nice effect on that main drive.
And then for staff, this is, this only applies to Neighborhood Eleven, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosenova.
Are there any other comments or questions? The motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number thirty-two oh nine, approving an amendment to annexation agreement for Somerset at Grant Park. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich.
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Downtown Farmer's Market. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the annual farmer's market as a temporary outdoor use from June 6th to September 26th at the village-owned riverfront property south of Lockport and west of the DuPage River.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have some comments. I don't think this is a good idea for several reasons. The riverfront is not quite ready for this. As trustee liaison to the Riverfront Committee, I know there's been different issues out there. We've worked with the area, we're trying to get plantings in. As trustee Fay mentioned earlier, just the parking alone, if that's in fact what caused that mud mess, although I think there's some off-roading opportunities out there as well. I think we also need some practical, you know, acceptable use conditions for that riverfront before we move in this direction. As, as an alternative to this, I did call Mr. Haberger, and he is willing to allow the farmer's market to continue at the corner of Lockport and 59 for another year till we can get this worked out. So I'm proposing that that's the route we go right now and not go in the direction of putting this at the riverfront. As we called last summer, we also didn't have a plan to get people out of there when a major storm occurred during Brewers Fest. I realize that's thousands of people by comparison, but it's still, you know, the planning and extra work that goes into that, so that's my recommendation, and I would not support this at this time at the riverfront. I'd love to see it move that way eventually, but right now, I don't think we're at the point to have this there.
Is the organizer for this here tonight? I don't see her here. We don't know if they'd accept, going back to.
I've had some preliminary discussions with the organizer. Initially, there were plans, again, to continue to operate at the hard corner of Lockport Street in Route 59. I can have some further discussions, if that's the desire of the board. Verified that that is still consistent with our second choice. Again, as our letter outlines, our first choice is the riverfront, but based on the input from the village board. I also had discussions with Mr. Haberger. He did, again, reiterate that he would be willing to host the farmer's market there at the hard corner this year during 2015, but I have not had any discussions with applicant. Again, she requested that the event be held at the riverfront, be more than happy, based on the board's input, to bring this matter back, if that's the board's desire, based on, based on my discussions with applicant. So I can't speak for her, whether the hard corner is acceptable or not this year.
Trustee Bonucci raises a very good point. We don't really want to damage something, we're just starting to develop and do a nice job of it, so. And it's still largely, in moist weather, you end up making a mess out of things over there, so. I have to agree with trustee Bonucci, that it might be better if we can go back. I'd like to see, that pursued with the organizers, if they're willing to make that change back for another year, I would suggest we do that.
Would it be possible to bring this agenda item back, let's say, at our next business meeting and give staff time to coordinate with Mrs. Bostangi and figure out if she'd be amicable to this counterproposal? Then, if necessary, then have that on the agenda then for approval.
Well, the only thing I would say, if, if the board would choose to turn this down, then she would have to approach again to see. But it sounds like they're trying to be accommodating to her, so I think that's more in line. I'm not positive, but I think that's more in line. No, I'm not going to motion to table it, but.
What would you like?
Probably somebody could motion to table.
I meant, did you want us to?
Might not be a bad idea.
If we table this to our next meeting, allow staff a chance to talk to the organizers and come back with a recommendation as to what they suggested.
That's fine, thank you.
In addition to talking to organizers, we should talk to the committee from the riverfront. We have a representative in the audience, but I'm not going to call on that person. But perhaps he could meet with Mr. Garrigan in the future and be able to get our input, so it's a fair input. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second to table this item. Trustee Peck.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Bonucci.
Yes.
Trustee Fay.
No.
Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Complete Streets. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt resolution number seventeen oh nine, adopting the village of Plainfield Complete Street Policy.
That is my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Nice, nice work, Michael. Very good work.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I made it the strategic planning session, too. I think we need to make sure that this gets some emphasis, and I think it should be a identified single person within the village that takes the leadership role and communicates with the board and with other community organizations. So I'd like, the way it was kind of presented is sort of like a committee. We have the traffic committee, we have public works, we have planning, and so on. I'd like to see some one person of those organizations take the lead role here and continue to drive it home, provide the emphasis, the urgency that, to make it happen.
With respect to actual implementation, as you know, this plan will be incorporated into the village's transportation plan. Based on the fact, the actual implementation will be the responsibility of the public works engineering department. So Mr. Threewood will be responsible for the actual implementation as it relates to planning, to making sure that all future improvements as developers come through. Obviously, the planning department will work with the development community to basically request their contribution for these complete street improvements. But the actual implementation, as it relates to construction of these improvements, obviously be reviewed by Mr. Threewood. So I think that addresses your concern of having an individual responsible for it.
Yeah, it does. My, I would encourage Mr. Threewood, he's going to be the lead role, to respond to the, or communicate with the board every other month at the very least. Six months or more for strategic planning feedback is not adequate in my mind. This needs, a lot of things need to happen here and can happen. So I would look for us to support Mr. Threewood in his efforts, and more communication that we get, the better we can help that support it, so.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you trustees, thank you, Michael. Engineering staff has been involved throughout the process of the Complete Streets document, along with the planning department through the, through the traffic committee, and I feel we're, we're comfortable communicating with the board and working through specifically the complete street measures along Meadow Lane to start with. And we'll be looking for additional input from the board as far as where exactly to start on Meadow Lane and which features to implement first, and it will be done on a temporary basis.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Threewood, I know you'll be very adequate for what you're doing. Obviously, you can. you can shape this entire program. The only thing I would like to caution is please keep the public informed, because I know people who live on Meadow. I know people that live throughout this entire community, and they like to give input. And so it's really important for us to listen to what residents have to say about their neighborhoods, their streets, not just take it from an academic point of view. And I know darn well you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rassage.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not the motion was made and seconded to adopt resolution number seventeen oh nine, adopting the Village of Plainfield complete street policy. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Administrators report?
None tonight.
Management services report?
One thing for consideration tonight, what you have in your packet is a revised personnel manual for the Village of Plainfield. The last time the full manual was before the board for approval was back in two thousand and five. So it's been about ten years since we've done a comprehensive review of the manual, although there's been several updates along the last ten years. Again, this is the first time that we've done a full-blown look and revisit of the, review of the manual. And we also had a representative from each department join for the last about year to review the current manual, implement the changes in the revised manual that you see in your packet. We've also had, and I would have to thank human resources director Joan Zelinski, as well as attorney Joan Myers, for their assistance in getting through this whole process. They were valuable in getting all of the language updated. We also had our outside labor attorney do a final review and question and answers along the way on some labor-related questions as well. So we finally completed the review. We believe that the updated review manual clears up some areas in the, in the manual based on rules, procedures, some federal and state laws that needed to be implemented as well. And if I can't answer any of the questions, I'd be happy to have Joan or even Brian answer some questions if you might have any.
Tracy, I recall early in the process last year, there was some concern that was raised by some of our personnel. And Joan's, Joan's report to us talks about an employee committee representing each village department. How was, how were those personnel selected? Do you know?
Be happy to answer that question. It was arbitrary and capricious. No, I'm kidding. That's how we roll.
Precisely to my point, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. No, actually, it was, it was somewhat of a self-selection process. We actually asked each department head to meet with staff and see if there were interested volunteers. And if they weren't volunteered, they would be voluntold. Thankfully, actually, we had employees that were very actively interested in playing an active role in this and got involved right away and provided some fantastic feedback and input. Those employees as well then did a great job of going back to their departments and giving updates as to where we were in our process, provided them thoughts and ideas of where we were on things, gathered the, gathered feedback, brought it back to the committee level. So it was a rather much engaged and informed and involved discussion across the organization.
Thank you.
A couple of comments, all favorable. Going through this, it's the most comprehensive personnel document I've seen. It borders, it's the same kind of well-written document that we have for the fiscal policies, which I thought were outstanding. I think everybody ought to adopt them. And you go through this thing, which I did, just section after section after section of details. And the thing I love about it, and I give Joan and the two Jones credit largely for it, I think, is the writing is so clear. It's, you can understand it. It doesn't take somebody who's well-versed in the field to understand it. Anybody can read it and understand what's going on. And so it's a superb document, and I congratulate you. And I think it's going to stand for quite a long period of time, because I don't see anything that's missing at all in this. You've got an awful lot of stuff, so, well done.
Okay, I have one comment. I did read it, and when you look at a document like this, it's the, we talk about the job titles, not the people in those jobs, because as we all know, anybody could be here or gone tomorrow. So keeping that thought in mind, the one, the one thing that seems inconsistent is on page thirty-three and thirty-four. On thirty-three, it talks about compensation, and it says that "subject to the village board of trustees' approval for all changes in the plan," which makes sense, and that should be budgeted. And then on thirty-four, it says "the village administrator may, at his discretion, consider merit pay increase for an employee or employees." And that just seems inconsistent. I would think that if, that, that would be something that would involve either the village president or the, and/or the board or whatever. You know, it just seems like an inconsistent statement. That compensation's one thing, and that merit raises are another. And no, I got no reflection on anyone here, but, you know, these are job titles. We're talking about not actual people.
Right. The, the entire compensation plan is what gets adopted by the village board, and that is exactly what we, we do follow. The, the next section that you're talking about does speak to what that starting rate of pay is, and there will be, and there can be, from time to time, where we might be bringing in a department head-level position or, or even a supervisor-level position from another community. Where starting them at that starting pay doesn't necessarily reflect where they should fall within that start. So it does give some latitude to administration to be able to start them at a different level. That said, you're, you're right. The mayor and I do have a good relationship, and perhaps we can have an amendment to that that says, you know, that it's subject to the village administrator and mayor's...
Yeah, just a conversation, because again, we're not talking, you know, we're talking about you right now today, Brian, but it may, you know, down the line, or however long this document's here, or you retire, or whatever happens, different people take different positions, and that's why we need to be, I'm looking at this as, as an objective document, not tied to any person of names. So again, I don't mean to...
Well, I do appreciate you saying you're looking forward to me retiring. I heard you say Brian and retire, so that gives me a few years.
You got a long way to go.
But yeah, we'd be more than happy to, within that section of the starting rate of pay, say that, that it's the village administrator and...
It's eight point six, merit pay increase.
Yeah, it's right. The, yes, I know exactly where it is, and we'll change that to reflect village administrator and mayor.
And I'm good. Thank you.
I think that's a very good point.
On page twenty-one, it's under item P, under code of conduct. You know, this entire situation of ethics policy five point one and code of conduct, it's really important, because you know, it totally defines what an employee can and cannot do. Item P, sleeping or being away from the workstation. I would have never kept a job, but sleeping on the job. But there's one point, to go to page sixty-nine on a more serious note. Page sixty-nine, thirteen point eight, telephone, voicemail, and fax usage. Former Secretary of State Hillary Clinton is under the, under the microscope right now because of a situation, the use of email, allegedly two different accounts. I think elected officials and employees in municipal bodies should realize and understand this entire concept of telephone, voicemail, and fax usage. It's not personal, it's supposed to be business. And in not only that, you're supposed to, it is, it is available for everyone. So whatever you put in print or in a particular message one way or another, you have to realize that you can be held responsible for that. I can be held responsible, this entire board can be, all of our employees. It's really important to realize, and I'm not using this to censure anyone, or, but perhaps just to enlighten, be understanding of what your responsibilities are, and also what latitude you have with usage. Personal use is at home. Professional use is on the job. And it's really important for all of us to understand that, because you can obviously get in a little bit of difficulty with not understanding that. And it is in the, it's in our personnel manu, manual, and it is the understanding. Thank you.
Assuming that we can make the changes as suggested, are there any other thoughts? If not, we will seek a motion.
I move we approve the personnel policy manual with the changes as noted.
Second.
The motion was made and seconded to approve the policy manual with changes as noted. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassage?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Engineers report?
First of all, I'm going to apologize to the people in the audience here tonight. The projector is not working properly. We tried to do some things and get it to recognize the computer, and we were unable to do that. On the positive side, the budget had gotten approved tonight, and within that, there are some AV improvements that are needed for this building. So it is kind of a nice segue. It's kind of a perfect ending to the AV system here and ushering in the new. I will mention, though, that the trustees should be able to see what's presented. Okay, not, should not, okay. And, but it should be broadcast too, as well, if people want to watch that. If not, we will make sure to scan these slides and make them available on the village's website this week, so people can view those too as well. This is a project that we've talked about, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wald first, and then on to Ms. Orban to provide the presentation.
Thanks, Alan. So we have one item for your consideration tonight, which is the engineering agreement for the Phase One and Phase Two design work for one hundred and twenty-seventh street improvement. That's an IDOT-style agreement because of the two million dollar STP grant that the village was awarded from, from Will County Governmental League. It's a project that was identified in the village's transportation plan. It's an important project for the village for the long-term transportation plan. And tonight, Tara Orban, who had worked on that plan, as well as would be the project manager for this project, is here to give a presentation, so they can't see it up there on the, on the board. Okay, well, she'll walk through, I guess, the highlights of the project, then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Evening. Again, my name is Tara Orban with Baxter and Woodman. And I'm here tonight to give everyone an overview of the improvements planned for one hundred and twenty-seventh street, and also a summary of the engineering studies and the design services that will be provided by Baxter and Woodman. The limits of the improvements start at the intersection of one hundred and twenty-seventh and Heggs Road. We're going to reconstruct one hundred and twenty-seventh street, starting just east of the intersection of Heggs Road, and extend about two-thirds of a mile eastward. So we're going to cover the frontage of Shenandoah, Kingsbridge subdivision, Northwest Community Park, and the, the east terminus of the improvement will be, you know, the west edge of the Tuttle Estates subdivision. The improvements themselves are going to be very similar in nature to what you see when you drive through the Tuttle Estates subdivision. It's going to be a reconstruction, so we're going to go from a two-lane, you know, rural cross-section with ditches and shoulders to a three-lane urban section. So we're going to have one lane each direction with curb and gutter and a painted median. And we're also going to have storm sewer, roadway lighting, a bike path on the south side of the street. So just to visualize, when you're driving down one hundred and twenty-seventh street, west of Route Thirty, what you see when you drive along the Tuttle Estates frontage is going to be the section that's pushed westward all the way to Heggs Road. In the fall of two thousand and fourteen, the village secured two million dollars in surface transportation program funds from the Will County Governmental League for this project. The two million dollars is federal funds that were also used for, most recently, the Steiner Road reconstruction project, as well as the one hundred and twenty-seventh and Van Dyke project. So both of those projects are similar in scope and magnitude to the nature of the improvements we're talking about today. So because of the federal money that will be used, it's two million dollars, and it would be towards construction only. Because of the federal guidelines, the project will be processed in a similar manner to those other projects that I mentioned, Steiner and one hundred and twenty-seventh and Van Dyke. They have to be processed through IDOT and IDOT's Bureau of Local Roads. In terms of the studies that we're going to be doing, it, when you use federal money, it's a, the engineering is, it's a two-phase process. The first phase is, we call Phase One engineering, it's environmental studies, public coordination. Some of the things that we do, and when you get to see your slides, I've outlined several of them for you. We coordinate with the stakeholders. There will be a public meeting for this project for, you know, potentially impacted property owners, residents. Any stakeholders will have an opportunity to provide input on the project. We evaluate the drainage patterns, we look, prepare preliminary plans, we look at air quality, potentially contaminated properties, we look at traffic projections, we determine what the right-of-way needs are for the, the project, evaluate potential impacts to social and environmental resources. Those are all the things that are done in Phase One study. It's basically a plan where we say, this is what we're going to do, and, and then we, we go for design approval. So the Phase Two engineering is the next step, and that's when we prepare the contract plans and specifications. We, we also work on obtaining the permits from the regulatory agencies, and we also work on utility coordination, and also plats, appraisals, and negotiations with the property owners. Just an example of one of the things that I know staff had asked us to look at for this project, and an example of what gets evaluated in a Phase One, is safety. One of the, I understand there's been some run-off-the-road accidents on one hundred and twenty-seventh street. All this methodology that I've outlined for Phase One and Phase Two engineering is part of the federal aid process. It's, it's done for every project that uses this type of funding. But like, we'll, we're required to obtain five years of crash data from the police department, complete a crash analysis to identify any patterns, so that we can recommend countermeasures to improve safety along this segment of the roadway. In addition to the roadway improvements that are proposed, there's also a structure that carries the West Norman Drain underneath one hundred and twenty-seventh street for this project. That structure will also need to be replaced as part of these improvements. The, the studies for that include a wetland delineation along the floodway, hydraulic modeling, using the, the models provided by FEMA, obtaining a floodway permit from IDOT, obtaining an Army Corps permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, obtaining a permit from Will South Cook Soil and Water Conservation District, and as well as providing any wetland mitigation if it is required. We'll also be doing a structure-type study. Right now, it's a, it's a double culvert with two corrugated metal pipes. Prelimarily, we think it's going to be about a nine-by-seven box culvert, precast box with cast-in-place wing walls. We can, we'll be evaluating whether or not, what the most economical type of structure would be, as well as a potential architectural treatment if it's desired. And then the last thing I wanted to cover was the schedule. After conferring with staff, it was decided to combine Phase One and Phase Two engineering so that it's done concurrently. So what's typically done is we do Phase One engineering, get design approval, and then start with Phase Two engineering. In order to expedite the project's schedule, we will be doing Phase One and Phase Two concurrently. And the schedule, there's a slide that, in the presentation, that shows the tentative schedule for the project. We're looking to obtain Phase One design approval in less than a year, and having an IDOT letting in two thousand and sixteen, so construction can get underway in two thousand and sixteen. That concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
I see a lot to be done. Two million dollars would cover all the work you described. It's also going to cover the construction. How much money, what I'm looking for is how much more money we're going to need to put in. This is a highly urgent project. We talked to the stakeholders, we're going to hear a lot of... to the stakeholders. You're going to hear a lot of sense of urgency, but I think you've got a good story that says awful lot of things have to be done. You're doing them concurrently, so you're doing what you can to accelerate that. So, that's plausible. The only thing I'm concerned now is, for all that work, is $2 million enough to do, get it done?
I'll answer it quickly. We, we don't have a cost estimate on the construction as of yet, but due to the size of the structure and the work that needs to be done related to the West Norman Drain, as well as curb and gutter, storm sewer, street lighting, a multi-use path, a sidewalk, other improvements, we're probably in the $4 million range. And we're just, you know, ballparking at this point. The, the bids can come in lower too as well. But typically, these $2 million grants are 80/20 construction grants anyway. We're pretty confident we'll be able to utilize a full $2 million.
I would think so, yeah.
This has been a high-priority project. The police can speak to it. The ditches are steep. And this is an area during the blizzard where we did have some cars that slid off the roadway. After the improvements completed, that'll be highly unlikely that it'll occur. As the board will recall, we had a couple of residents, the Rodriguez family and the Rowe family, that came before the board, seeking some improvements or some relief in that area. And actually, this is a pretty prompt service in, in my mind, less than five years. We had told them we'd do the best to get it in the five-year plan. And sure enough, we're within the five-year plan. So, I'm, I'm pleased with that.
Good story. Thank you.
Alan, Randy and Scott have done a wonderful job at securing these funds for this project to be able to move forward. Absent the $2 million, it really does become a very difficult project financially for the village with these funds. It still is a bit of a stretch for our capital account, but we, we fully anticipated this going forward, so.
Important, yeah. Good.
At this point, we're looking for a motion to approve the agreement with Baxter and Woodman.
I move that we approve the Engineering Service Agreement with Baxter and Woodman for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 Engineering work for 127th Street to the amount not to exceed $308,000.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassidge?
Yes.
Trustee Pinucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Planning Department report?
No report.
Building Department report?
No report.
Public Works report?
We will work with IT and, and Building Maintenance to resolve all, all the issues. And it will be better next year. Thank you.
Police Chiefs report?
Yes, on behalf of Chief Connaughton Peck tonight, I have two items for the board's consideration. The first, we are seeking a motion to authorize the execution of a one-year lease for the police motorcycles through Erdemec Incorporated, which is doing business as Star Rock Harley-Davidson. This is for the three police motorcycles that we currently have in our possession. It's an extension of the lease by one year. They are 2011 motorcycles. And we are seeking your permission to do so.
I move we authorize the execution of the one-year lease with Erdemec, Inc., doing business at Star Rock Harley-Davidson for three motorcycles in the amount of $5,997.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassidge?
Yes.
Trustee Pinucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
And then tonight, we also have the February 2015 Operations Report. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Commander, I have a couple of questions. On page 6 of the report, it shows sex crimes has increased without being graphic or, can, can you give more details on that?
There have been several instances as of late. Some of these involve registration of sex offenders as they appear on our list. There have also been several that would constitute their sexual abuse or sexual assault cases. I know at least one of those was recently press release that was released by the police department. It's difficult to give you any more details on that at this point.
That's fine. I have one more, but it's not, it's not coming to me. Thank you.
Quick question. On page 4, I think it is, on the code enforcement, we talked about adding a person to, or half a person to help out with the code enforcement. Looks to me like we have a new format. We have new violations, action taken after rein inspection and, and ones that are closed after rein inspection. That's a very nice graphic. To my knowledge, memory, it's the first time that's been done. I like that. I think we ought to continue that, especially when you get two people. That shows what's really happening. The rein inspection is particularly important. Before, we used to see total numbers and we're quite sure what happened with some of them. But this way, this makes it very clear, very nice.
Thank you. Yes, this is a change, as was requested in discussions, clarifying what we do with those cases that are reported to code enforcement. The definitions were changed and therefore, we changed the categories to show that a large number of our cases, once we make notification to a homeowner or a property owner, they do go about trying to rectify that situation. Oftentimes, that situation is resolved. But there are also those cases then, that we do move into an enforcement action in order to resolve those cases. And this more accurately reflects that, in our opinion. So, I'm glad to hear the board agrees with that.
Excellent, yeah. Thank you.
You'll also notice on that page that there's a small little note at the bottom. It's not so small because we're getting into that time of year. Snipe signs. You know, we affectionately refer to those as daffodils because we seem to take them down and they show right back up like daffodils this time of year, or, I'm sorry, dandelions?
They're dandelions. There were several pulled today, as a matter of fact.
So, it is something that we do take quite seriously. And, and I'm happy to see that you have that listed as well, too.
That's all I have tonight.
Commander, I, I found the other point I wanted to ask about. It's on the 23rd page and it's regarding suicide attempts, 9424 by drugs. Is there anything this board can do to be more supportive, more proactive in marketing, in discouraging that behavior?
As you're aware, that's a large social issue. We have various programs that we can put people into once they've actually attempted or expressed that they're considering such thoughts. Unfortunately, obviously, there's limited activities we can do if they don't make that cry for help, as it's often called, to prevent those kinds of situations. Specifically for the board's action this evening, I don't have one. We could obviously do some more research to try to do those things, maybe look at some other social prog, programs to enact. But tonight, I don't have a recommendation for you.
Thank you.
Attorney's report?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Reminders?
On March 17th, the Plan and Commission, the 23rd will be our next committee of the whole. And April 6th will be our next village board meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.